All right. Call me in order, everybody to rise.
The party leaders to the party, under the name of the state of America, and to the party, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We got a roll call, Madam Auditor? Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Tree? Here. Here, question? All right, approval of a regular council meeting minutes from January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Everybody receive them?
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Discussion, all in favor of the January twenty-sixth minutes, signature by the same eye?
Aye.
Most same sign. First reading, Madam Auditor.
Now this is hereby given the county of Porter County, the legislature legal officers of Porter County, the eighty-fourth county president, and the administration building, both with a one sixty-five annual salary, to the greater. On January twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, at five thirty p.m., consider the following appropriations as a county budget for the year twenty-twenty-one, to transact any further visuals to the number of those towns. General fund, transfer of banking charges, three thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. June probation salary, two thousand five hundred and eleven dollars. Local youth and pets fund, eleven twelve. Venue assistance, two hundred thousand. Health fund, eleven fifty-nine hourly, three ninety-seven, five sixty-five. FISF, thirty thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-two cents. A license to do training, twelve seventeen, and education, eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Adult probation admin, admin fund, two thousand, salaries of reduction of fifteen thousand. Adult probation unit fee, salaries ninety-two thousand six hundred and seventy-seven, and then another salary, so re-budgeted, of twelve thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars. Adult probation control, three hundred and three hundred and five salaries, a dash one thirty-two, six seventy-seven. Shared donations fund, forty-one oh eight, uniform and clothing, two thousand two hundred and twenty-two. Veteran service donation fund, over thirty-two, three thousand. Health department donation fund, office supply, twenty dollars four hundred and fifty dollars for a seventy. Medical and dental supplies, nine hundred and two dollars and thirty-one cents. Chef's supplies, two hundred and eighteen dollars thirty-one cents. Other rentals, seven two hundred. Auto equipment, over a hundred, eight hundred dollars. And public safety, the other tax, other mobile equipment, sixteen thousand four hundred and seventy-four. Countywide CAD, nine-one-one system fund, contractual, fifty-one dollars and seventy. Addition to sponsored grant fund, health service, twelve thousand, P O E grants, two grand, and over give, seventy-five thousand, two eighty-three. Coastic, ISDH grant fund, eighty-nine and four hourly, one hundred and thirty thousand five forty-one, and like a nine dollars nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-seven. There is during a session, shall address through the run, the appropriations, and may be referred to the U N department, both government funding, where applicable, the L G L could make a ready determination, and for the position clear on the accord of the appropriations, that be reviewed by the mayor's office, or down in published February twelve twenty-one.
That was a lot. All right. Commissioners? We've got what? Fund, looks like an additional of two hundred thousand dollars to venue assistance, reason appropriation needed for venue assistance. Good afternoon.
Hi.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
So, how far will this get us?
Uh.
How far will this take us?
Hopefully until we're open again.
When's that?
In the fall.
We do start events again in April, little bit more in May, um, June, do I obviously fare, but we'll steam ahead hopefully August.
It does feel like the good, the good news is, is that, uh, it does seem, does, it is starting to seem like there's a light at the end of the tunnel and that the pent-up demand for the facility is, is great, that we can tell at this point from the calls and the, and the bookings, so we do anticipate once this forum is able to operate at something close to capacity, that it will not have any problem being booked in full and profitable as it had been in the past, so we just need to get there.
This appropriation is only for the Expo Center, not Memorial Opera House, correct?
Um, it's in there for the venue assistance, so that has some flexibility, but at this point in time, they're the main focus of that.
Is Memorial Opera House planning to open at the same schedule?
Yes. Obviously with the different building capacities, but as soon as they're able, same thing for them. We did this for them, um, before the end of twenty-twenty, and so Expo was able to get a little bit farther, and just so everybody also knows that we have, uh, everyone that's on staff right now at Expo, um, Under Laurie is, may not be working at Expo right now, they are probably at other departments, and it's maybe several departments through the week, and then those departments, in lieu of either hiring or doing the part-time or whatever it may be, is then paying back Expo, so this isn't like we have people sitting anywhere or staring out the window, everyone's working everywhere, so either it's, you know, we have some people at the animal shelter, we have some people with facilities, we have some people helping the health department, um, and the same thing for the Memorial, for the Memorial Opera House, so, uh, we're trying to keep those people moving around so that we can keep this at the lowest we can possibly keep these type of, uh, requests until we can get back to full operational.
And so you said we've got bookings already, or we will be taking?
No, we do have some bookings, uh, um, we actually have an event, not this weekend, the following weekend, um, but then it's quiet again, but it's a smaller event, it's a long event, but it's smaller, it's a dance competition, um, and then the rest of March is pretty quiet, there's a couple in April, but then May, May is still hanging in there, they haven't canceled, so we'll see what happens with May. June is more weddings, so a hundred people, we can pull those off easily, and then August so far, so far, is holding on.
And the fair is planning on going on?
Fair is planning on moving ahead, mhm, we meet with them tomorrow.
Yeah, I think the, uh, the willingness that, uh, that you have had Lori, and of offering up your, your people to work, you know, collaboratively with other departments and so forth, is terrific, and, uh, you know, I, I think we can do this, do this comfortably knowing that, uh, people are providing some service to Porter County, uh, in some form or fashion, and the, the culture that been created that allows that to happen is something that I think, uh, that I think everyone should be proud of, um, so I, I make the motion, I make the motion for the additional.
I'll step in that motion with the idea that I do feel there is light at the end of the tunnel.
I'm hoping. We get to.
There's a motion, second on the floor. Continue your question. Any further discussion on, uh, two hundred thousand dollars additional? We got a roll call, Madam Auditor?
Thompson, Joseph.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Here.
Thanks Lori.
Countywide CAD, nine-one-one system. So there's an additional, um, you guys, I know it's under you guys, so yeah. Two hundred dollars and six hundred. Tractical services, appropriation needed to pay invoices.
Hello.
You want to get into a little bit with us, what, um?
So this is the appropriation of money that we have received from the town of Porter in order to pay their down port, down payment portion for the installment of the CAD and R M S and J M S.
Make the motion.
There you go. Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion on this? We got a roll call, Madam Auditor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. All right, so, thank you, I, I guess, with Commissioners, why I got you up here, if you guys, yeah, you can stay, it's only a while. Oh, come on, um.
He was dispatched.
I, uh, you know, uh, I think it was last meeting or something, there, you know, I ended up digging into an article, you know, um, caught my attention about the nine shares of vehicles, but that really didn't, what caught my attention is, is the contract, ambulance contract, you know, that expired and that we only, you guys only went out one year on that, so, I, I, and I've had some conversations with a number of people, and I think maybe it's the time to really get into that conversation about, you talked about looking down different paths of, that's the only reason you signed a one-year contract with the ambulance service, and having some conversations, I think that path is, maybe I'm wrong, is looking at fire territories and districts.
Well, I, I think to start off with, um, you're correct, we have a one-year ambulance contract that gets us to the end of this year, the reason why we did that was, we know that, that is, uh, the current format of the ambulance contract dates back to, well, to at least when we sold the hospital and probably predates even that, that kind of format, so we've been in this, um, situation, and, and it's one of, I think, one of the last, uh, issues, uh, that we have laying around, frankly, that is on a, on a current trajectory that isn't sustainable, and what I mean by that is, this has always been paid, um, from hospital proceeds, and those hospital proceeds that are remaining, that haven't been set to the foundation of what is what this has been paying, or how this has been paid, that's going at around eight or nine hundred thousand dollars a year, so we've only got a couple of year burn rate left, uh, on this particular ambulance contract, and obviously, things have changed greatly since we've sold the hospital, a little long since we started being in the ambulance business in one way or another, whether that was when we owned the hospital or when we contracted with a private entity, so that does bring us back to what you were getting to, and I think at this point, part of the hope was in twenty-twenty-one, was to put all options on the table to figure out ambulance and fire, and this county, um, and that also, some of the things that we were hearing over the years were, was getting increasingly difficult in some places to get the volunteer fire departments, or, you know, to get the volunteers to come, um, and, and also, you know, we dug into it last year to kind of figure out who, whose ultimate responsibility is the ambulances and things like that, and at the end of the day, it's, uh, it's, it's one of those areas of legislative history that doesn't necessarily pin it on anyone within the county, uh, cities and towns, as they incorporate kind of in, inclusive with that incorporation, kind of bring that upon themselves with police, fire, ambulance, and things like that, the county, uh, doesn't necessarily have a shell anywhere, and the trustees don't have a shell anywhere, so there's maze, and then, and then it leaves it at that, so, uh, right now, what they're doing is contracting with Porter, uh, to provide ambulance service to, and backup, basically to the entire county, I think the only, I think the only corporate entity that doesn't get backed up by the, the hospital as pursuant to the agreement is maybe Portage itself, uh, but the rest of the municipalities are either backup or we're doing it for them, um, and then we also, within this matrix of, we have the, we have, uh, the, not only the hos, not only the ambulance contract itself, but then we have some direct payments out to individual municipalities that have always caused us issues in, in, in trying to explain and rationalize, but those things were easier, I think, at one point in time because of the different relationship we either had with the hospital or things like that, those become, have become increasingly more difficult to explain as we've moved forward, and ultimately, from our standpoint, obviously, uh, everybody in this county, uh, needs to have the ability to have an ambulance come to their house, and then, uh, after that, uh, we have to be able to afford that ambulance, uh, bill, and as it sits right now, I think it's probably about, let's see, about four fifty to the hospital, four hundred and fifty thousand to the hospital, about a hundred and seventy-five to the city of Portage, and maybe just under sixty thousand to Portage Township, so that's what we're, that's what we're expending every year as a county, uh, and again, that fund is not really gaining any, there's no additional money going into that fund, and the interest that it's, uh, creating, obviously, isn't of a substantial amount because it's, again, under, uh, current interest rates and then the rules that we have, so I think fire districts, fire territories, I think, uh, we've had some talks with Mr. Justin and what the city of Valparaiso has done with center township, I think that's a potential model to look at, uh, we're not the first, obviously, the first people to think that this is a possibility out there, and I know we've looked at some things, maybe even down in Monroe County, down around Bloomington has, has done a few of these things, and so we're not sitting at the cutting edge, but, uh, we probably need to throw this on the table and start really looking at whether or not, uh, consolidation and modernization and things like that are a possibility through this method.
I mean, traditionally, fire is handled by the township trustees.
Correct.
Wouldn't logic dictate that the ambulance goes down the same path?
Logic would, but the statute doesn't.
Well, disaster says we don't have to do it either.
Correct.
What happens if we don't do it? The, the towns and cities have no coverage, they would have?
Well, the town's all about incorporated. The township trustees, they, they can raise their own money, they raised money now, that's where I think where the, uh, genesis has to come from, is the trustees.
Well, and whether it's trustees doing it through their, that way, or trustees getting together and doing a territory.
Yeah, it's such a consolidation.
Or, or things like that, I mean, I think those are all of the things, um, that we need to kind of look at, because ultimately, we got to go back to the table with Porter Hospital, or it's, uh, north.
Northwest.
Northwest Hospital, and, uh, start talking about a new ambulance contract, but, you know, uh, you know, it's a great, it, and four fifty has been the number for three years now.
It was.
It, it was closer to seven hundred and fifty thousand a year, so we've been able to whittle away at it, but, you know, we.
It was climbing at one time, I, I remember it was getting towards a million dollars one time.
It was, it was.
But. We had a meeting of the minds.
Nine hundred thousand for a year.
And, and so we, we, yeah, I mean, we've got a, we've got kind of a clock then, um, well, we've got a one-year contract clock, but then we've also got where we're funding it from, you know, maybe there's only a couple of years behind that, and then, you know, we're, we're looking for eight hundred some thousand dollars a year to fund something that.
Well, and to be real clear, if we have to go back to Porter right now, you know, we have one municipality that just quit doing it, and currently, right now, our contract's covering them.
Didn't even call us.
But, that won't be, that, that, my point is, we go, we, if we stayed the same, going into twenty-twenty-two, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars will not be the number, so I don't want to get that number as the backstop, because.
Oh, it's going down?
It's not going down.
It's dry.
It's not going down. Um, so we have to deal with that, and obviously, we have to just, you know, get as many people together as we can to try to work through the problem, and obviously, uh, hopefully we can come up with solutions that put, leave everybody in whatever state they're in, in a better state than what, than what we currently are in, because unfortunately, I don't think what we're currently doing is sustainable, long-term, uh, nor do I think some of it makes a great deal of sense at this point, moving forward.
And the legislators obviously put some models in place, through, you know, through legislation for things like this, you know, there's territories, what they have, and I think there's a district down south, you know, for some other reasons it might have been formed, but, you know, just in a little research that I did, I mean, it's, people are doing it, forming territories and districts throughout the state, and there's partnerships, I mean, it's not, I know, everybody hates the word consolidation, but.
Well, I think a lack of volunteers, the generational, they can't get volunteers, so we're almost forced into paying, which forces consolidation, but we're not, we're not talking about getting rid of volunteers, right? We're talking about. No, I, I think.
No, no, no.
I just want to back up the bus a minute. I don't think that's our business.
Right.
We tell the township trustee, how are you going to handle it? Because we're out of the ambulance business, that's what nobody wants to say. We're going to get out of the ambulance business, it's up to you.
Yeah, but we have the cities and towns, and, you know, not just, you know, in the north, we have the cities and towns, and more of the towns.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a hybrid as you go around the county, there's not one size that fits all, you're, you know, I do know that some of the south township communities are already talking, uh, there's, uh, I know West Porter, which is the west side of Lake of Four Seasons, has their own fire district, they're downstate right now in legislation, they're getting a bill that's probably going to go through pass, but right now, their current, for their district, it doesn't allow them to charge for ambulance, so what, they just had to go down and do some cleanup on the legislation to let them do it, but when that gets done, we'll be a fire district, and they have their own ambulance, and they'll have their own rate, and they'll have everything, and then that territory, or the difference between a territory and a district, or, they're different, um, but I think that was a territory, so I think you're going to have a hybrid of different things, it's either going to be working out, uh, a district, or, or, uh, now I'm mixed up, not the other one, uh, territory, to where there's agreements, but then the financial obligation then comes back to those appropriate town councils to vote on, where a district is, the district forms a board, and they make all the financial decisions, and they make all the decisions of that district.
And they're taxing.
And, and they're taxing, and they're like a conservancy district, as Jeremy pointed out.
I mean, where you go, you're looking at volunteers, no, I know that's a problem. Okay, so.
I think in a growing county, it just seems like it's time, I mean, because of the contract and everything, that maybe we start having some discussions with, you know, the cities and towns, I'll certainly reach out to, you know, the city of Portage and Portage Township, you know, I talked to the township trustee a little bit about it, and I'm doing a little bit of research recently, I, I've noticed that, it used to be UnVaugh, have some people on staff, which is now Baker Tilly that we have on staff, so we have a consultant which I believe has a little experience in, um, these territories and districts, so I, I think we've got, we've got the right tools here, we've got a little bit of time to move forward and maybe start reaching out to see, in a growing county, that maybe it's time to modernize a little bit, you know, and see if there's a, a better method of delivering some services, and this is emergency services that we're talking about here, so.
You're probably going to see, uh, which is common practice today, you're probably going to end up seeing some, uh, fire departments, they're full and part-time, um, it's a hybrid, and the benefit for that, for the citizens of this community, is that if we can, uh, get these districts in place, or territories in place, or whatever, and, and you go to more of a full hybrid type staff, you're going to see some savings in your insurance policies for homeowners, because now you're, um, you know, so, so, so the resident will have some opportunity to gain some of this back through insurance, because now you're being, you're being served by a fire department that's full-time, right? So I think there's, there's going to be benefits from that down the road, and, and from my perspective, what you really allow, is you allow the people that are the true professionals, that understand this stuff, to run it and do it the way they want to do it, now depending on if it's a territory or district, that's going to have to be determined by the, the, the folks that are running the show on all that, and that's going to be a decision that they'll have to make, but I just see this being, you know, we, we, we as a county, the board of commissioners, what we really want to concentrate on is dispatch. Dispatch is what we're here for, that is our number one obligation to this county, and we want to be able to do that at a level that's, that's high, and when you get into these areas like this where we really have no control, I think why it's become such a big hot button is because we're sitting on a bag of money, and, and people, you know, people want that money for whatever reason, to be used for whatever, we're saying that before we even have that discussion, we need to study it, we need to see if it, we know it's not sustainable, uh, if you think it is sustainable, then we got to find money in the budget the next couple of years to figure out where we're going to put it, so either way, we're going to have to address this problem, I think with where we're going in this county and the community, like Jeremy said, I think, I think we're on the right track, and this is long overdue, it, we're finally taking the training wheels off the sale of the hospital here, this is the last piece that we need to, um, you know, make happen from, from our perspective, and then we can go and concentrate on things that we want to be good at, right? So, um, that's just my take.
Is there legislation that is needed?
No, no, I think legislation already exists for, uh, territories and, and.
Center Township does have a territory?
Territory.
I live at Center Township, and, uh, I was very much aware of, you know, how they, uh, joined together, I was in favor of it, um, I think that, uh, it gives people somewhere the satisfaction of knowing that they do have this, and it's, that they're.
They're full-time.
Yeah, if they live in, in the area, and they're, they have part of a, a control of it.
I mean, I admire the volunteers, but they're not there.
Well.
I mean, full-time.
Volunteers will have a part.
No, but I mean, you still have some full-timers sitting there, ready to go.
Oh, yeah.
And that ten minutes may, may mean something.
Oh, absolutely.
So I assume you got to get buy-in from all the communities, right? The council members, the chiefs, they have to buy into this, is there a plan to have a meeting with everybody, or how, what, how do you guys attack that, or is that?
I think.
Well, we're trying to catch this discussion first, Andy, we don't have a model yet, but, um.
I just wasn't.
You know, I do know that there are discussions going on, uh, down in South County, uh, because I've talked to a couple trustees down there, they're trying to just work it all out, um, I think some are going to be.
They're the missing link, is the trustees.
Yeah, some may be a little more difficult than others, um, but, and I think that's where Baker Tilly coming in and helping us run some models will also, uh, give them the opportunity to see, you know, the type of things that they can do with that type of money too, so there's going to have to be, you know, we got to create some documents, right? You got to create the data first, so we can all go back and then start ripping it apart or building it up, or whatever we have to do, and that's the stage that we're at right now, we're, we're just trying to come to you, have a discussion, let you know where we're at on the ambulance contract, what the intentions are, and, uh, between these two bodies, we're going to have to figure this out, but we think it's doable, we think it's the right thing to do going forward, um, we just got to be measured, and we got to let these different areas sort of figure out how they're going to fold in individually.
There need to be consolidation and coordination, there, there has to be some consolidation.
Partnerships, for sure, and, yeah, I'm, I'm anxious to have the conversations, and I hope that all the chiefs around the county, everybody, including us, you guys, the cities, towns, townships have an open mind, let's come to the table, and let's talk about, you know, providing emergency services for the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, how, what it's going to look like, so.
I, I honestly think if we go into this positively and we, we work through all the issues, I think we're going to come out on the other side five times better than what we are now, I truly believe that, especially with the money we've just spent in dispatch and, and what we're doing in nine-one-one and everything else, this is, this is the direction that we're heading, this is, this is part of the housekeeping that we need to do now, as, as we're, we're funding and elevating that unit, uh, within the county government, so.
Do you want to get to trustees in here as well?
Yeah, I think everybody's going to have to.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Everybody.
It starts with the trustees, it'll start.
It's going to start with the trustees.
But there's a lot of people involved, isn't there?
It's going to start with the trustees, because otherwise, raise the money.
Yeah, but then that's the only one's paying for the services now.
Yeah, they are.
Portage pays for it. Portage pays for it.
That's what I mean, I'm saying, with the trustees, I'm, I'm talking about South County more. They're, they're going to be the lunch bread on this, because they're providing time now.
Yeah. It's going to be trustees, town managers, uh, mayors, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's going to, it's going to hit all areas, you know, and then obviously, we, as unincorporated Porter County, we got South Haven, um, and that's something that I know Jeremy's talked to Brendan about, Clancy, and, and he's aware of it, and he's open, uh, to, you know, working through that, so, um, you know, I think that, uh, you know, we got to try, this is what we're up here to do, and we're, we've got to come up with a way, and I think we have some bright minds up here, we can all figure this out, um, we're, we're not trying to penalize anybody here, we're just trying to make this a better setup for everyone, that's really, you know, the closer that these, these departments can be managed closer to home, rather than this big, you know, what we are up here, it, it just, it, the, the, the knowledge, the, everything stays at that local level, and that's, that's, that's where you get better.
The main thing, though, I believe, is to make sure that, uh, what the county gets to provide, everybody has to have the service.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, and it has to be quality.
Yep.
And I don't, you know.
I mean, somebody, somebody's trustee has some money.
Yeah, yeah.
Sitting right now, um, probably more than we think.
I, I think it'll be a good conversation moving forward, and I look forward to it.
Yeah, so when we meet, we're going to run on time, we're going to start the process.
Well, we'll, we'll get with the commissioners, and maybe see if, you know, Baker Tilly, if they have a point person there, and.
Yeah, you were talking about, there's a certain person that you want to talk to that's done a lot of this, so I think we need to make contact with them, and we need to start building, uh, building our groups up, and then I know Mike was going to be, you know, our last meeting, we told Mike just to go ahead and start poking around Valpo, uh, to see, you know, what type of opportunities, uh, that, that may present itself for Valpo, uh, they might be up to rural west, stand east, I, I really don't know, um, we'll let it, we'll let it develop out as it, as it develops out.
Yep.
We have no preconceived ideas of who's going where, none of that, none of that's going on.
Yeah, it's not even territory versus district versus, you know, South County could look different than North County, uh, the, the center district could look different than, than all of them, so there's, this is the, you know, the beginning of it, and just trying to make sure that we end up with the, you know, we're, there's no grand plan except we need to fix this for the next twenty years, and what we're doing right now doesn't seem very viable. and what we're doing right now doesn't seem very viable.
And, and I'd just like to add one real quick thing. This county, over the last four or five years, we spent close to 15 to 20 million dollars on our 911 infrastructure. And the one thing that I've learned by going through this whole process is that equipment is expensive, and it falls out of favor in about seven years.
Yeah.
So from that perspective, on a 911 department, that's gonna be in itself just a job, and a lot of money coming and going every seven, eight years. 'Cause you gotta upgrade this equipment. It, it, it's redundant equipment. It's, as the software goes, it goes, right? And it's only gonna keep getting better and better. Um, that's really what we wanna spend our time on and our resources. Because if we have the best dispatch and, and connectivity, uh, then we push it out to the communities where it's closer to them and let them handle those things. And that's, so I, I just wanna put it in perspective from the money that this board has spent. The good thing is, you know, we have a 20-year agreement with the state of Indiana. Our towers are paid for. Um, our, our, you know, so we're in a much better shape going forward from our infrastructure standpoint. Now we gotta figure out the next piece, so.
Well, I appreciate you guys' time. Uh, you know, moving, let's see if we can move this forward a little bit with the community.
Thank you. Look forward to working with you guys on this.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Superior Court, three. Judge Grant, take general fund as a transfer of $300. Some interpreter to furniture and fixtures.
Make the motion.
Second. Yes. Motion second on the floor for this transfer. Isn't any discussion? Take $300 transfer. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All in, same sign. Superior Court, fourth, Judge Buckley, take general fund. Anybody? Um, there's a transfer of $3,400 from training and ed to hourly, $2,500 from travel to hourly due to staffing issues. So, um, there's also Form 144, $22 per hour, part-time court reporter. Reason, need to hire a temporary, temporary hourly part-time court reporter due to staffing issues. Any discussion?
Somebody off, or?
Yes, we have someone out sick. We have somebody out sick.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Is that a ball for transfer, 144?
Yep.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? So, can we get a roll call? Madam Auditor with the 144 on there?
1,000, Grant.
Yes.
1,000, Justin.
Yes.
1,000, Pepperidge.
Yes.
1,000, Simms.
Yes.
1,000, Reesus.
Yes.
1,000, Bogus.
Yes.
And 1,000, Britton.
Yes.
1,000.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Veteran Services Director Jim, um, take donation fund. There's an additional $3,000 to other services. Reason appropriation needed to make contributions to American Veterans collections. 25, 1,250. New creation local homeless shelter organization. 1,250 in local VNA to help veterans during hospice. $500.
I'll make the motion.
Motion in the second?
Yeah.
President Reavis, could I interrupt?
Yes, sir.
I changed the, uh, amounts. The $3,000 remains the same. I apologize for this last-minute change, but I wanted to give $1,000 to each of those three organizations.
Oh, mine was an old one. Okay, I'm sorry. I, I get a draft, and I keep my draft, and I put notes on it.
All right.
So, okay, so it's $1,000 each to all three organizations. Is that what the motion was? I'm sorry. Motion in the second, concur with $1,000 each organization. All right, um, is this something that you, you normally do every year? I don't, I don't remember seeing this before.
We are very thankful to John and Wendy Gates from Culvers here in Valparaiso. They, uh, looked out for the veterans, uh, community in November, and they've given us over the years, uh, oh, a little over $4,000. I think that there's approximately $3,600 in donated accounts yet, and we'd like to go ahead and make sure it's, uh, helping the veterans, uh, in our local community, so that's the purpose or intent of this, uh, request tonight, so.
Okay.
Did you say, most or all of that, uh, donation funds coming from Culvers?
Yes, all of it is.
Okay, that's terrific.
It is. They're wonderful people, very kind.
Well, that's awesome. Um, any, any further discussion on this? Can we get a, a roll call with the additional?
1,000, Justin.
Yes.
1,000, Pepperidge.
Yes.
1,000, Simms.
Yes.
1,000, Reesus.
Yes.
1,000, Bogus.
Yes.
1,000, Britton.
Yes.
And 1,000, Graham.
Yes.
Jim, I know you had some, a couple certificates of appreciation you wanted to give out, and I know we had it at the end, and you had three people, but I think a couple are, um, quarantined.
They are.
So, I mean, if you wanna just take care of this right now.
If I could do that, I'd read this off, appreciate that.
I don't know if you, you don't wanna say the whole name. He's got the gentleman. So if you wanna, this is a, a certificate that Jim wanted to give, you know, out for, uh, certificate of appreciation to Lenny Corso. Is that proper? Did I say that properly? Um, you know, with heartfelt gratitude for your tireless dedication and devotion to enrich the lives of the veterans and their families of Porter County. So Jim, if you wanna, you know, give that to him.
Thank you.
You know, and you wanna speak a few words about what, what the kind gentleman has done?
Yeah, everybody here, this is Lenny Corso. Lenny is, uh, a teacher at ID Tech here in Valparaiso. He was a Green Beret Army medic, uh, surdonably, and, uh, still in good enough shape to probably go back and steal. His lifelong passion has been to go ahead and, and help young people with physiology, and, uh, he's in the Department of Science, ID Tech, and he's, uh, works there on a daily basis. Lenny, thanks a whole. And I'd say one more thing. Lenny is the head president of the Honest Club here at Valparaiso. The Valparaiso Honest Club is the largest in Indiana, ninth largest in the world, and, uh, Lenny's the co-chair, chairman of all veterans activities and events that they, uh, they do to recognize veterans and families in our community, so I'm gonna thank Lenny for that. And I'd like to go ahead, President Reavis, and talk, uh, quick, give a quick buy-on the other two.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I just feel that they should be recognized publicly, and I thank the council for, uh, helping the Veterans Office recognize people that did all this volunteer work, so. Uh, one of the awards goes to a fellow by the name of Tim Chancellor. Tim Chancellor is a Army veteran who's a guard gunner on the U.E., 18 months in Vietnam. Uh, Jim is lost to one eye. He works tirelessly, uh, helping people with PTSD and mental issues. He established the 501(c)(3). It's called the American Veterans Selection Organization, and it's built to help people provide homeless shelter and mental health assistance when needed. And he's unable to make it his way to, from now COVID use quarantine. The other person I'd like to recognize tonight is Jim Graeber with New Creations. I know a lot of you here know and, uh, have long, uh, respected Jim. Jim has, uh, still on the D-board. He's given up CEO and President of New Creations, and then Miller is there at this time, uh, as CEO. But Jim has moved to Virginia. Jim has worked over 15 years establishing, you know, a work program for, uh, homeless, uh, individuals in our, uh, community, and 25 to 30 percent of those individuals are veterans, so I'm gonna thank Jim for providing, uh, medical care, work, and, uh, shelter for, uh, veterans in our community, so. Thank you very much.
Appreciate the work from all three.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you, thank you.
Have a radiative.
Thank you for the service, thank you. Okay, um, moving on. Treasure, Michelle Clancy, general fund transfer, no, an additional, an additional.
What happened?
$3,232.31 to bank fees charges. It's like the reason 2020 excessive drop in earnings interest rates did not offset banking fees assessed by Chase Bank. These banking fees are the cost for 13 different bank accounts. We need to do a trial.
I tried, I tried. No, it, you know, last year was just horrible, so, um, I tried to move money around to keep the, um, charges covered, but with the rates so low, both from the bank and from Trust Indiana, um, we ended up with a balance of $3,000. We did earn, uh, $270,000 in interest, so it's not like we're negative. It's just, um, I'm used to wiping the fees out and showing lower interest, but because of, because of the rates, it didn't happen.
I'll make the motion that we approve. Uh, and, you know, when you get the, um, pretty soon we're gonna have to pay the banks, uh, who have all our money.
They do charge to hold our money right now. That's part of these fees, so. So the motions in a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. So, yeah, I was gonna ask you about that. I was sitting there flipping through YouTube, looking for some, you know, live music, 'cause you can't go to concerts, and I came across the Porter County Board of Finance just popped up, and, and you guys were talking about the $200,000 that we earned in interest. And I don't know how much went to the general fund, but, so I was curious about that, so, I mean, so we made interest, but, I mean, so with the additional, I mean, why, if we've made interest to the general fund, I mean, is this, why did again why I missed it?
Okay, so, um, the way it usually works is I have, I had the majority of the money in Trust Indiana, because I was getting the highest rate there. So most of the operating money, I had like 18 million over there. And then, um, in the meantime, we had the other operating money in the Chase Bank, which we were earning 0.57% earnings credit, and we were also receiving 0.6 in interest. Then came April, and that completely just dropped down to a total of 0.18, so right there we lost 0.5% on the money we were earning. Then Trust Indiana began to drop, uh, so they went from 1.6 at the beginning of the year, and in April they hit 0.47, and then continued to go down from there. And I think it was August, September, I moved 15 million over from Trust Indiana into the Chase account to try and get the 0.23% earnings credit, instead of continuing with the 0.10% from Trust Indiana, and then by the time of the end of the year, came around, we were still just short.
Okay. Yeah, Michelle, how do, uh, the rates from Chase compare to other offerings that you might get from other competitive banks?
Um, I have not done an analysis in quite a few years. Um, I think Chase might be on the high end with their fees, but they were, um, offering us a, like I said, the both. We were getting earnings credit and interest rate on the money, so, uh, to, a total of 1.17 at the beginning of the year was almost comparable, well, it was a half a percentage short of what we were getting at Trust Indiana, um, which actually I was going with Trust Indiana, because that was much higher than any kind of committed, um, investment. So the, Trust Indiana is totally liquid. I can pull it out within 24 hours, and because this is, uh, uh, operating funds, you know, I don't want to lock it up in any type of way, so, I mean, it is worth looking into an analysis fee. I have spoke with Vicki before about the thought of even converting all our stuff from Chase would be very.
It would be a big task.
It would be a very big task.
It might, if we haven't done it for several years, it might be worthwhile just to at least, uh, find out what else is out there, or perhaps to keep Chase, uh, to sharpen their pencil a bit, to help out, to, to keep the business.
Right.
I have a question. You said that you used to pay this with the interest fees, but we made interest, so why wasn't it paid with interest fees this time? That's the part I didn't catch.
Okay, sorry. So we, we had the account set up. We were looking at earnings credit and interest, so it was like earning on both ends.
Yeah.
But, um, when the rate dropped, so the earnings credit dropped from 0.57 to 0.18, and then the interest dropped from 0.6 to 0.3, and then just completely went away altogether.
But I thought we just, you said there was 200,000 or something in interest, right?
Gotcha.
Why didn't you break this from that?
No, that was.
Well, that's what I understand, yeah.
We received that in on a monthly basis, so every month we were receiving that in. That 270 is from County Stormwater, which stayed with that. Um, and then the hospital stayed with the hospital funds, a major move.
As your own debt account.
Yeah, so it's like mixed the interest.
All right. I think we beat you up enough over three grand, so. Can we get a, a roll call on the additional?
1,000, Pepperidge.
No.
1,000, Simms.
Yes.
1,000, Reesus.
Yes.
1,000, Bogus.
Yes.
1,000, Britton.
Yes.
1,000, Graham.
Yes.
And 1,000, Justin.
Yes.
I'd like to see her come back next month with an analysis on rates from surrounding banks, maybe even local banks. Whatever's left local. Please do a little research.
Uh, the, yeah, like, the, they have to come in and do the analysis. I can't just get it done.
You can't focus the rates?
They have to look at individual line item fees that Chase, uh, it's like, there's a giant schedule. I get about a 20-page report every month from Chase of the individual fees for the 13 banks, and what they're all charging. So for another bank to just come in and have to take that and look at it and compare it, I don't, I can ask.
Yeah, please do.
Do we need 13 accounts?
Uh, yes, we do.
Celebrate some of the bonds required in our, uh, account.
Mike, I think Mike is right. The fact we haven't asked for analysis in how long means we have to ask for analysis. If we haven't done it in five years, six years, you've been here eight, haven't you? You're in seven, you're seven, six?
Oh, no, as treasure, I've only, this will be my fifth.
So we haven't done an analysis in five years. Biggest time, that's all.
That's fine. I'm just saying, I don't know how you're gonna get it in a month, if you could give me more time than that.
Okay.
All right, so.
We need to find out something.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Order Township assessor, Alta. Um, transfer $130 to contractual services, a salary $400 from contractual services.
No, I'm split.
Hourly. It's just, yeah, you guys can change.
Yeah, I'm looking on the draft.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd make a motion.
Hold on, so what is it then?
It's 400 from contractual services to hourly, and then 132 from contractual services to FICA.
Okay. You guys got that?
Almost.
Motion.
Second.
Does that hit a second?
Hold on a second.
Motion in a second. Um, any discussion on the transfer? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All in, same sign. Thank you. Porter County Sheriff, Garage and Jail. So, um, donation fund, there's additional $2,222 to uniforms and clothing, and the reason to cover the cost of two vans. Very generous donation received from, um, Ms. Gusta Sin. There's, you guys wanna keep going? There's a Department of Energy Green Fleet grant. That's an additional $75,286 motor vehicles to cover the cost of two hybrids. That's the sheriff. You wanna keep going to the jail too? Additional $16,474 to other mobile equipment. The reason to balance, to cover the balance of the cost to purchase the throw box. And the last is our Addictions Response Grant. There's an additional $12,000 to mental health services drug courts to cover the cost of specific types and numbers of visits of aftercare for inmates upon release.
Make a motion, approve.
Second. Motion in a second to approve all four additional for the sheriff and the jail. Hello? How are you?
Good. Good. Didn't think you don't wanna talk to us.
Yeah, I was just reading. I thought, maybe we showed some questions or anything. No? Any discussion?
Uh, I'd like to ask, um.
What the throw box is. You bring us the throw box.
No, on the, uh, mental health service, Matt. We've been, uh, how long have we been doing that?
Doing what? The last.
The land. Oh, hell.
Oh.
Has that been an ongoing project?
Yeah. This will be the second time.
The second year.
Whether we're gonna get it again, or I don't know. You know, we'll ask.
All I wanna know.
Any further discussion?
Where does the grant come from?
Yeah.
Department of, uh, um, Energy.
No, no, and the, no, the addiction, the addiction.
Oh, the addiction? Um.
Just curious.
Oh, on that one. Okay.
Is it the DOC, uh, DOC one, the $12,000?
Oh, that one is a new grant, uh, well, it's not new. We had it last year. Um, let's see it.
Sims Grant?
Yeah, here.
Okay, that's me.
Just curious.
That's all.
Well, thank you, Ms. Gusta Sin, for that very generous donation.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Further discussion? I know we're gonna have to get together on, and, and kinda circle back around before budget session and really talk about vehicles, you know, with the commissioners discussion and stuff, and, you know, so it's definitely just, just remind me before we get into budget session, and let's sit down and have a conversation on what our, I, plans are moving forward with that, 'cause I expressed some concern, I think, if you remember, so. Hit that before we hit budget session. So can we get a roll call on all four additionals?
Yes, 1,000, Simms.
Yes.
1,000, Reesus.
Yes.
1,000, Bogus.
Yes.
1,000, Britton.
Yes.
1,000, Graham.
Yeah.
1,000, Justin.
Yes.
And 1,000, Pepperidge.
Yes.
Thank you.
Have a radiative.
Thank you.
Juvenile probation. But there's an additional $2,511 of salaries. Reason, probation officer recently earned her master's degree in criminal justice per the minimum salary schedule for POs is to receive an additional 5% in her base salary, which then is a Form 144 tax. It's $50,212 to $52,723 probation officer measure, $2,511 increase for earned masters in criminal justice.
And I would ask if we could make that retroactive to February 14th, which is just previous Monday.
You can ask.
I'll make the motion for the additional retroactive to February 14th, including the Form 144.
Second. There you go. There's a motion in a second on the floor. Any discussion?
I do have a question on, of course, I'm a master, is that an internal policy?
Actually, it's, uh, it's part of the judicial conference of Indiana that mandates the minimum salary schedule. It's written into, for the minimum salary schedule.
Good.
Oh, I haven't seen those so bad.
Bob usually does on these. Can we get a roll call on the additional in the 144? Yes.
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 Yeah. Yeah. That's great.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. All right. Thank you. Analyst officer, the general fund, there's a transfer, $10,000 from vehicle repairs and maintenance to lease payment. Reason, transfer needed to cover the cost of lease payment for new AC transits.
Are you a new vehicle?
Van.
They needed one.
I have a vehicle.
You guys want Jeremy's picture for the side? Not even sure what that means.
Foiled now, the new vehicle.
Well, this is our first one.
There's a transfer on the floor?
I'll make the motion.
There's a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion?
Yes, what, what specifically type of, uh, transfer?
It'll be a Ford Transit. It will be, um, on the inside, we'll have a crate, and it'll be decked out on the inside a little bit for the animal control officers to store their gear.
Is that for picking up animals, or taking them to shows?
Uh, no, no, it's just for picking up at night, you know, um, going out, running at large. We have three animal control trucks now that are well past their prime. Um, all of them are at or over 200,000 miles.
So, are you in this van, or in this program that we have to replace it?
It's a lease program.
Oh, it's a, oh.
Yeah.
A three-year lease, or?
Uh, I think it's a five-year.
Five-year lease?
Yeah.
So, when are the other vehicles going to be?
Soon as I get my first one in, then I'm going to order the other two. This, this $10,000 will cover most of the other two additionals for the, for the rest of this year. I might, it depends on when I get them, I might need an additional $2,500, $3,000 at some point, but I won't know that until I, you know, get delivery times and payment books and that kind of thing going on.
Thank you.
You got a motion?
Yeah, there's a motion in a second. Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor of the transfer, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same signs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Adult probation. A lot going on here.
A lot of paper.
A lot. I don't know how to start. Um, so, there's three different funds we're dealing with here, so there's a reduction of $60,000 in salaries, and the reason reducing the amount in the ADM fund. The action allows those salaries that were previously approved to be paid from the ADM fund to now be paid from the Puff Fund, retroactive to first paid period 2021. That includes a Form 144, $6,905 to zero, $8,436 to zero, $8,163 to zero, $8,163 to zero, $8,163 to zero, $5,474 to zero, 1,000, you guys really going to make it?
You have to read it.
$1,177 to zero, $8,436 to zero, $5,083 to zero, the reason, the $60,000 reduction, retroactive to pay one. That's the ADM fund.
So, Melody, would you care to give us just a little bit of background on all this?
Sure. Perhaps I will help.
Thank you.
So, historically, in the probation department, we collect fees for services from individuals. Those fees have been deposited into three separate accounts, depending on what fee is being collected. Per state statute, however, those fees should all be deposited into one account. So, what you're seeing right here with the reductions and the additions is basically we're eliminating these two accounts that we shouldn't be putting money into, and we're putting everything into one account. So, you will see the reduction of that admin fee corresponds with the addition in the PUF fund. The reduction, on the next page, the reduction of that pre-trial service, uh, fund corresponds with the addition in the probation unitary fund. So, that's basically what's happening. And around budget time, you may recall, I come in here, and I have five different budgets because there are five different funds. So, what we're doing is, is we're no longer going to be using these two extra funds, the pre-trial service or the admin fund. We're asking that those salaries now come from that PUF fund. So, there's no change in anybody's salaries, nothing like that is going on. We're just cleaning up some of the ways that we're-
Are we going to eliminate the budgets tonight?
I'm sorry, what?
Are we going to eliminate the two budgets that you're not using tonight when we make this transfer?
Well, so this is what, this is what those 144s are doing. They're trying their-
When all is said and done, are we going to have two more budgets at budget time?
Yes, we will.
But are we going to close them out now, right at the end of the year?
That might be it.
That's what I was saying.
So, that, that might be a question for the auditor. We have been working with the auditor to, to bring those monies together, to merge those accounts.
So, Bob, Bob's asking that those now will be eliminated off the books, the ADM and the PTS fund?
And when will those be eliminated? That's what he's asking. This month, or about that in the year, or when?
She said retroactive at the beginning of the year.
Oh, good. That's even better.
All right.
Need a motion, approve. Oh, only, all, all the-
Motion to approve all the, the ADM-
I'll second.
Reductions, the, the Puff, all the additionals, and the reductions, and, uh, the PTS reductions, that you're including all of that?
Yes.
As written here?
Why, nobody can raise.
Uh-oh.
That was the magic word.
Uh-oh. There's not a raise in there.
At least you won't.
No, we're not going to raise nothing there anywhere.
There's no raise, I promise you that.
Oh, okay. All right, there's a motion, in a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Melody, the only question I have, because I think it's great to streamline, get rid of three funds, make one fund, it's easier for everybody to understand. Um, now, it, was this a requirement from the state, or is this just our own initiative to try to clean things up, or?
So, actually, statute requires that those funds be deposited into one account. I-
Is that a new thing, or something that?
It's not a new thing. I wasn't here when those original funds were created. I mean, it, it made sense that those sub-funds were created, but by statute, everything-
It's something we realized, and we're making it right.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll call on, on, that's all the additionals and all the 144s in these three funds?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Health Department. I was wondering, I was looking around.
Hiding in the back.
Hiding in the back, I'm like, oh, oh. Come on down.
Busy people.
All right, so, we've, Health Department, we've got additional of 3,900, 300,000, 3,970, 3,000, 397,565 to hourly.
Is that coming from the CARES Act?
$30,413.72 to FICA, the reason appropriation needed for COVID vaccine sites, and there's a, one, Form 144 tax to that, up to $30 per hour vaccinator manager, up to $17.50 cents per vaccine support staff. Reason create Form 144 to pay hourly for vaccination sites. Bob, you have a question?
Is this coming from the CARES Act?
Um, this is, yeah, this is from state money. Is that correct? State grant money?
Yes.
Yes.
So, what might be helpful, certainly for me, um, I know, as far as budgeting to date, uh, for the COVID testing, and then the bleeds into the vaccines, I know what we've seen up till now is the state was going to, or was giving us $200,000, I think that's correct, um, to get us through June 30th, or something or other.
Yeah, which for the test sites.
For the COVID test sites. And we, you know, quickly realized that was woefully inadequate to take care of our needs, but-
Right.
So, what I, what I have in my mind is I have that $200,000, and I know it's been updated since with the COVID testing, uh, has, uh, has increased and is more robust and going beautifully. Uh, the vaccine has been set up, and that process and everything is going great, and you guys are to be applauded for all the work, uh, that you've done, for nothing but positive feedback, uh, from all the people that are over there. And, uh, they're, they're thrilled, they're thrilled with the process of what you guys are doing. So, amidst, uh, a lot of the difficulties and the struggles that I'm sure you guys go through in the databases, the work that you do is so appreciated, um, and, uh, and it's a task that nobody ever would have anticipated. So, thank you for that. But from a, from a budgeting standpoint, that's where my mind's at, in addition to the appreciation. So, is there an easy way to explain where we, where we're budgeting initially, and where we're going with this, uh, this budgeting amount for the vaccine sites, and is there an easy way to explain that?
Well, as you, as you know, we started with a $200,000 for the COVID test site, and I think we have a balance right now of-
131.
131,000 something, uh, that we still have. Uh, we have been requesting, and Connie and I have been talking to the state, trying to see if we can utilize some of those funds for the vaccine, because the vaccine site is what's really flourishing. Uh, the testing, as you can see by the reports that I send out, the numbers are down. People are just not going to get tested anymore, and we still have the two test sites running, and we feel that that's really kind of a, a waste of money, because the numbers of people that are coming in are, just aren't there, but yet people are still having to get paid, because those two sites are running by paid staff that we had to hire.
Are you, are you running two separate sites?
Yes, yes.
Two test sites and-
No, are you running a testing site and vaccination site in Alpham?
Yes.
Same building?
Yes.
Two different buildings, but at the same-
Next to each other, yeah, kind of.
So, you could share the people?
No. You could go from clean to dirty to clean.
Yeah.
Not in the same day, Bob. If they're working at the-
Okay, well, not the same day, but if the testing is going down, couldn't you shift them people over to the vaccination?
We did take a few of the people from the test site and moved them over to the vaccine site. Um, the pay is different, because they don't have the exposure, so we don't want them flip, flip flopping from one day to another, just for a payroll.
What do you mean, do they have the exposure?
The vaccine, the exposure isn't as great, with the testing, people coming in that have COVID.
Right.
People coming into the test site, some of them are actually symptomatic.
Well, some of the people are coming in to get the vaccine.
They're, no, they're not.
How do you know?
They're stopped at the door. They're stopped at the door.
How do you know they're not?
Because they're assessed for symptoms, they have masks on, the fevers are, the temperatures are taken. We do our best.
They could be asymptomatic.
They could be. No, you're, you're right.
Okay, so-
We do our best to reduce.
We can't have the exposure, it's not as great, right, for vaccine.
Well, I think, Bob, maybe where you're going, and I had a conversation, and Sylvia and I were talking to Vicky a little bit earlier, you guys are restricted on some of this usage, right?
Right.
The $200,000 could, as a state grant, could only be used for testing.
Yeah.
You can't use it for vaccination right now.
Right, no, right.
So, but I, I do believe that, I think Vicky said you guys received $120,000 recently for vaccination.
Yes.
And you have to use that money for vaccination, but I think I, I heard you saying, you're trying to get clarification from the state to see if you can-
Yeah.
Maybe begin to use some of that?
No, the, uh, as far as the $120,000, we're going to use that for the vaccine, uh, test site, but as far as, like I said, what Connie and I are trying to convince the state that out of the $200,000 that we still have, plenty of money left over, can't we roll some of that money into the vaccine site, because that's where the need is at.
Right.
Right.
Well, make sure if you get clarification, you share it out with the auditor.
We were, yeah.
Even Stabler, she's not-
Yeah, no, right, right.
Yes, not auditor.
I was in a meeting, and Dr. Box was one of the presenters, and she indicated that she did not want to co-manage a test site because testing, testing is going to continue, especially with the protection for marriage. But as of right now, they are very restricted, and I do want to emphasize that these are federal, uh, grants, and they will be heavily audited, and if there's an issue that comes back, we will have to give the money back. So, um, we'll just have to be careful.
We work very closely with Vicky.
So, so if I understand, so the grant that we're talking about specifically is a $200,000, and that was COVID testing specifically?
Yes.
And, and what's, what, uh, I'm confident by the time we're done with testing, that
$200,000 will be spent and gone.
Yeah.
I mean, we will go through that easily.
But if they, if they cut back a little bit, we'll stretch it out.
Well, I, I think to that point, I, I think, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what you guys have done, which I think is the right move, is you have cut back on hours of testing?[1497.72] of testing?
Well, what we have done is that before, we were running the north side and south side of one building. Because we don't have the people coming in, we're only doing one half.
Yes, so we are making adjustments for the reduced demand.
Catch the money out for this.
You do.
Yes, I appreciate that.
And if there are, we feel like the managers there feel like there's actually too many people there working at the, you know, they kind of get a feel for it the first couple of hours and if they feel like it goes slow, they actually, you know, ask people, you know, do you want to go home? I mean... And also based on appointments, you can see how many appointments we have. So, if we don't have a lot of appointments, there's no need to have two vaccinators or two intake people. We cut it down on the staff.
And the walk-ins usually are first thing in the morning.
Yeah.
So, we try to have the staff there in the morning and then if the walk-ins are slow, then they want them to go.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact that you're adjusting as a result of the reduction in demand.
I noticed that you have six volunteers.
Oh, we have several volunteers.
Well, I certainly like to give them recognition.
Of course.
We appreciate them.
For, you know, coming forward during such an important period of what we're going through.
So, Letty, so we, do we have a motion on the floor on the...
I'm going to motion all of them.
Second.
On all of them?
All of them.
So, there's a motion and second on the, so there's a number of different things. There's the additional up top here for the 392,000 and the 144, you know, which is hourly. Then there's the Health Department Donation Fund and that's still, you're extending out the North Shore donation.
Right.
And then the last is the Indiana State Department of Health Grant Fund and that's the 200,000 and you're just doing additional for the remainder, 130,000. So, the, up top, so there's a motion and second on the floor for further discussion. This is coming from the 600,000 from the state, is that where you're getting this additional? Is that...
They're getting an additional appropriation out of their health fund.
But that 600 was dumped in there?
It was a deposit from the therapist or the payroll that was around the 100,000. But it's not being used. Their tax revenue is coming from their fund.
Fund or fund, I got you. I understand now. So, if you needed more money for testing though, there's money available in that fund?
That's where the fund got the money.
Right.
From the care's money, right?
So, okay. All right, so...
And this is basically just to get us through the end of June and then depending on how things go, you know, hopefully we won't need all the money, but we'll have to reevaluate at that time.
For the test site.
Can you speak to, because I think we've covered the COVID testing, which is still necessary and people are still, it's easy to get an appointment and so that's going very well.
Yes.
Can you talk about the vaccine program going forward? Because I know initially you were talking about having different sites and a rotating site. Is that still the plan or not?
No, well, we decided is that, and I talked to Jeremy about that, is that at one point, working with John Pieslway at our emergency preparedness, is that the thought was to try and rotate, to keep the expo site running all the time, but rotating three. The problem with that is that we see a lot of problems with the state when they're trying to set up the registration program, ZOTEC, and that's what's causing us a lot of problems because we have no control over that. We are dependent on them to set it up, which we're having problems right now with the portage site because it's not set up and people can't register because the programs from the state is not set up. And so imagine if we do that, rotating, we have to shut it down, start this one up, then shut it down, then start it up, that would be too much, plus the confusion it would cause on people not knowing where the site is going to be opened at.
Yeah.
So, we decided that it would be best to have Valpo, two sites that are going to mimic each other in size and capacity and that way people can have either portage or Valpo to go to.
And then as, as the folks are, you know, of course they've reduced the age to 60, 60-plus, which I'm sure created a lot of additional demand. And I think...
Computer crashed, actually.
That's an extreme amount of demand.
You have vouchers now?
Not there yet, just yet. But, so, as, so as you look at that, I think, as someone's looking for an appointment, I think it's still, you know, within a reasonable amount of time that people are, and can you speak to, if you went on there today, you're 60-plus, you went on there today, is there an average, would you expect the March 10th at one site or March 15th at the next site? Or do you know where you're at from a scheduling standpoint?
I, you know, I know that our, our portage site, we do about 100 vaccines there a day and there's three days a week. And the state just opened it today because they didn't have it built out and the Wednesday is full, tomorrow's full already and they just opened it. And there are sites though, there are a lot of appointments for Thursday. So, I did want to offer up to you that we are currently using Moderna brand vaccine. And we got a call from the State Department of Health, their immunization coordinator, asking us if we would consider switching over to Pfizer vaccine because they looked at our, what they call the throughput, you know, how many people we do in a day. And, you know, our allotment is 2,200 doses a week and 300 of those go to portage, basically 1,900 days Valpo. And our appointments are set up with the amount of the allotment of doses that we have. So, currently, we are in the expo, 10 appointments every 10 minutes. And for a while, we were actually doing one every minute, but we were doing, we were doing 100 in an hour.
Right.
So, we've got some great staff and we've got that, that system is really set up well. But the reason that they, you know, they, Porter County really does have a very positive reputation at the State Department of Health and that we do things right, we have support. But that switching over to Pfizer vaccine, right now, they have more of a supply of Pfizer and they want us to make the switch next week. And this is how they do what they do.
Exactly.
But, next week, and, you know, you probably all know that you cannot mix, if you have one dose of Moderna, the second dose has to be Moderna.
I did not know that.
One dose Pfizer.
Oh, yeah.
And then also the scheduling is different, the second dose of Pfizer is three weeks, Moderna four weeks. You know, we can work that out, you know, we know how to do that. But we will be switching and like I said, they can ramp up our, the number, the, of our allotment much sooner by taking Pfizer vaccine. So, that means our larger site, we will switch from our office to a larger site, like Letty said, similar to the Expo Center, hopefully very soon because we'll have the doses. And the state is going to supply us with an ultra-low refrigeration unit to be able to do that.
Well, we'll still have to have a supply of the Moderna for the second shots though.
We will, we will.
Getting both at once.
We will, yeah.
Kind of cycle.
Until we phase that out slowly.
Yeah.
But first shots will be Pfizer and then we'll have to be very careful, making sure that anybody coming in has their card, you know, we've got on there what they had first and that they get the right thing first.
They supplying you with the ultra-low freezer?
Yes, sir.
What about backup power?
It's going to be stored at, what's it called, the... Well, it's, yeah, it's going to be stored, actually, to start out with, it's going to be stored at the hospital, at the main campus. And because we don't have a backup generator at the expo, our lovely new office in Portage does afford us that ability. So, if we had to put it there and transport it down to Expo, we can handle that. Or to the new site.
Where do you use power? Texas.
Yes, right.
Final question, final question I have is kind of the third, the third prong of this, which is our CSI process and program. And can you speak to where we are with the inspections that are going around and adherence?
And I'm glad you brought that up because actually I talked to Sheila today and one of the things that she suggested or recommended is that there's not much to do with that anymore. The restaurants, everybody's doing a good job. And so, we really want to talk to you guys about, you know, backtracking because we don't really need the people to be out there anymore like that.
Good, good.
If anything, we can respond based on complaints if somebody calls. But as I told Sheila, if somebody calls and complains about a business, a bar, whatever, we can do a first round, do a call and just say, hey, just want to let you know that we received a complaint because you're not masking or whatever, and give them that courtesy to improve before we go out there and just write them up.
So, if you're not doing those inspections anymore, I know you had some people from the Y and from a lot of different departments, are you going to still be utilizing those people or are we done with those?
See, the thing is, what I'm trying to do is keep costs down. So, I'm constantly looking at the numbers because the last thing I want to be is coming to you constantly for more money. So, I'm trying to, if I, the schedule that I gave you, it shows that we use a lot of volunteers, we put in volunteers first and then wherever we have openings, then we put our staff in there. And then we, when we don't have a choice, then we have to put hired staff in there, paid staff. And so, we're trying to minimize that. So, the thing is that it hurts me that they don't have a job, but same time, I'm stuck between trying to help them out, but same time, there's money in that.
That's my question because these people, we just moved all this money earlier, saying that they were going to be staying and working. If she's not going to be utilizing them anymore, what are they getting paid to do?
The expo staff will still be working.
The expo staff, that was all you had? You didn't have Memorial's Opera House?
We had, naturally...
We had facility beginning, but now they are working for facilities.
So, you'll still have the expo staff working, you're just getting rid of the YMCA extra staff?
Yes.
These 144, I noticed there's a lot of 35 hours. Are we providing healthcare?
They're only going to be working a maximum of 25, 29 hours. Like the sites are open to 35, so that's why we put that in.
Right. Some of them come in and they don't work the whole...
Well, that's right, that's right. And they're not going to become full-time?
No.
No, 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 no.
Thank you.
Not at all.
And they're told that when they come to volunteer, we actually have a form that they have to sign, acknowledgement that this is a volunteer service and that it's not a full-time job.
Okay. Letty, the, do you know how many, we, I don't think we have that many inspectors out there currently. Is that fair to say?
We really don't.
And is it a hand, are we down to a handful or less even?
I think probably, like you said, a handful. There's not too much going on.
But based on the information, you know, the, kind of the, the listing of inspections, it looks like, at least in the month of February, that is way down.
Yes.
It's down, from what I, my count shows like 12.
Yes.
And so, as you're asking us if, you know, it wouldn't be our call to say eliminate that process. I mean, it was the Board of Health and Dr. Stamp who initiated the inspections and the verbals and the written's and the closures. And, you know, I think that'd be a call coming from...
And that's a recommendation I'm going to make to them.
And I would support that wholeheartedly. I think based on the education process that you folks went through and the businesses, sure, there were a couple of struggles with some businesses.
Right.
But overall, it seemed to work.
Yes.
Where people got the message. And we're at a point now where the businesses, generally speaking, are following the guidelines and so forth, but we're at a point where if there's businesses that choose not to, then there's an avenue for people to notify the Health Department. But for the most part, it would be nice to not have people out just traveling around, visiting, looking specifically for this. So, I think that's, I think that's a sign of progress. And I think through that educational process, we've...
In talking to Sheila, one thing that she said, the only complaints that we're getting now are people that are just either bickering with each other, restaurant to restaurant part of ours, or somebody upset because they didn't get their fries crispy enough or something.
Right.
Oh, I didn't know we can call on that. All right, any further discussion? The sports complex, the games, the high school games and stuff, that's going good?
Uh, well, that's different. I think Sheila is trying, what she's doing is she's doing a lot of education, trying to inform them they have to follow the guidelines, just like with everything else, so that's what we're doing.
What are the guidelines?
I'm sorry?
For a high school basketball game, what are the guidelines? Could I, I don't know if I know that.
They're at 75% capacity, so they have to figure out...
Okay. So, does that apply to churches?
My church is like a quarter capacity.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure.
I'm just curious.
Well, I know most of the churches are complying with that and, but at one point in time, I heard that it did not comply, churches did not have to comply with that. But I think most of them, most of them are. We do have a facility that gives us some headaches. But I think that there, you know, all of the public venues are complying with that and it applies. Now that we're in yellow, it's looking, you know, yellow color, it's 75% capacity now.
We're following the same approach though, especially with these kids getting, being able to go back in the gyms and support, you know, their fellow students and stuff. And I'm sure there's a little excitement going on and stuff. We're following the same process, mostly just trying to educate.
Right.
And if you get a verbal or something, but, you know, that's the last thing we want to do is...
I know that I've gotten, you know, we, when this initially started, the eight nurses that I have, we have, we had two teams. There was so much to do and four of them, including my, or three of them, including myself, were on the school. We had to approve or we had to review all their plans. And then we had the other four on the contact tracing and went that way. So, I know, Greg, that we've had two of those four plans for, you know, as we increase the capacity and ask what they're doing is okay. A lot of it had to do with, you know, where they sell their popcorn and...
Confessions and stuff?
Yes. The confessions stand because you still want people distanced from each other and not congregating, you know, all up around and, but a lot of it had to do with that, separate bathrooms and individually wrapped, you know, goods that they were, you know, like chips and cookies, everything had to be, you couldn't, you know, come up and...
They're making a hot dog or something.
Right, right, right. So, there were some rules with that, but they're getting better all the time, so...
All right, is any, we still got motion and second on the floor, any, any further discussion on that?
The only thing I'd like to say is the vaccines are up, the positivity rate is down, hospitalizations are down.
Right.
Things are on a great trajectory at this point and it's in large part thanks to you folks. And I, just in closing, to say that the work that you folks did was at last Monday, Tuesday, the snow day where the world shuts down, with the exception of the Expo Center.
Right.
Where you administered 400 vaccines to friends who were so appreciative and excited to be able to go even though nothing else was happening.
Right.
And to me, that's heroic to be able to do that. So, I applaud you guys for all the work, but especially the extra effort, far and above anybody's expectation, you're out there on a day where most people stay at home. So, I appreciate that.
Vicki, did you have something really quick?
Yes, just a point of order, you're improving the hourly rate for the people who vaccinated. Out of the health fund, could you also prove that same form, 144, for the COVID grant fund, because once they start using the 120 for the vaccine, you'll need the hourly rate.
Yeah.
If we could pay your...
Make that...
Okay, there's a motion, second concurs, the 144 up here on the Health Department Fund also applies down with the grant fund.
Yep.
Motion, second concurs, okay. Clear call on these three additionals and the 144, both 144s?
Councilmember Brechner?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
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 And it has been one hell of a ride. And you guys have to say, doing phenomenal, thank you.
I'm laying it out in the tail end.
We're there for you, so thank you.
We do thank you for that because we know we've been able to help you, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And it's good to hear that. Thank you.
Auditor Vicki Terbonic, elected official training fund, there's an additional $8,085 training and education per county council budget hearing decision. General fund appropriation for the auditor clerk survey and treasure for training and education were eliminated with the expectation of using this fund instead. This is, this fund comes from the Recorders Statutorily Divided Fund that goes to training.
Yes.
So, and you just need an additional to pay for some training here?
Yes.
Perfect.
Move, move.
Motion, second.
Second.
So, we eliminated some lineups in the budget session because we found 30, 40,000 dollars sitting in a fund from the Recorders perpetuation or, well, is, I don't think it was perpetuation, the Recorders fund that...
No, he's got a million fifty...
Divides it, so he's just coming and grabbing this because we eliminated it, so...
Right.
Clear call on the $8,085 additional.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Jessica?
Yes.
Councilmember Poprod?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozick?
Yes.
And Councilmember Brechner?
Yes.
Second reading.
And there is also at the same levels that were in the, what, the 2020 budget, because there were no changes in the total level.
Second reading, Madam Auditor.
Whereas it is determined that it is not necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated under the annual budget, therefore, be resolved that the Porter County Council, Porter County, the other agency, the following additional funds are hereby appropriated out of the general fund, the general fund, $5,733,000, list of under $1,000, health fund, $427,000, $978,000, elected official training fund, $2,085,000, evaluation added, $2,083,000, evaluation used, $2,083,000, evaluation for trial, a negative $32,770, shared donations, $72,200, seven donations, $2,000, health department donation, $24,000, 36,000, public health, the other, the other, the fourth round, like hands, addition to the fund, $1,000, the other, the other, the addition, the addition to the, I had to say, $1,357,000, 24,000, the other, the other.
Is second reading, entertaining motion on second reading?
Second, I'll make the motion.
Motion and second on second reading, discussion? Clear call on second reading, Madam Auditor.
Yes.
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 Thank you, attorneys, report.
There's nothing to discuss other than the resolution which is going to be discussed next, so I'll just wait for it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, we got BZA appointment, you guys, I'll take the blame for this. You know, I had recommended somebody last time and come to find out he was within city limits and you can't live within city limits, you have to be in an unincorporated area to make decisions in unincorporated area for the BZA. So, we reposted this and there's some applications in front of you, you guys, so we need to reappoint somebody to the BZA.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Jimmy Claver.
Does he live in unincorporated?
Yes, he does.
How second is that? With a motion and second for Jimmy Claver for the BZA, any other nominations?
Oh, you didn't see it?
All right, all in favor of Jimmy Claver sitting on the BZA, second, five, a saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, we'll try it once again, hopefully Jimmy can help out.
We'll have to move.
Don't move, all right. So, we took care, all right, so Kentucky Valley Basin Commission, presentation, Mike Novotny, Porter County Engineer, where's Mike?
I'm right here.
I'm going down, Mike, I'm sorry. That was a long meeting. We can, I think, I think everybody's had a chance to dive into this a little bit on their own. Have some questions, so Mike, you want to kind of light it up?
I do have just a, an exhibit at least, maybe I can try to bring it up here. Um, where you guys? Because I just got a hall, just show the, the fact and the geography here.
Yes. So, and this is, and we do have a resolution afterwards, guys, that, you know, I think we had some choices. Choices were to raise fees on residents and we chose to just, we already have a stormwater fee and that's what the resolution talks about, is just taking that, the amount we have to pay to this commission out of our existing stormwater fee.
And how bad does that impact the stormwater account?
Uh-
I'll cover, yeah, I-
Yeah.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to skip ahead.
That's okay. Not a problem, not a problem. I wanted to bring this up in case you guys did have questions about any of the sort of factors here. Thanks for having me this evening. This is, this is the result of state legislation that was passed in early 2019, now known as Indiana Code fourteen thirteen-nine, which created the new Kentucky River Basin, Yellow River Basin Development Commission. It's an eight-county commission. One member appointed by the Board of Commissioners from each county sits on that board as well as a member or representative of the Indiana Department of Natural Resources. Under that same enabling legislation, the state legislature said, hey, not only are we going to reorganize this commission, but we're going to impose a special assessment on all properties, all parcels located are within the boundaries of the Kentucky River Basin. They, in that legislation, they also laid out basically per land use, residential pays a certain amount, agricultural pays a certain amount, industrial, commercial, and institutional utilities. So, in that legislation, they give the counties some choices. You can either enact that special assessment on all parcels and add that to the tax bill or there's some other options in there. The way that we saw it from the Stormwater Board's perspective was, look, everybody in Porter County is already paying for the maintenance, upkeep, and operation of our drainage infrastructure and that included the Kentucky River. So, to put another assessment on our taxpayers, on our fee payers, didn't make a whole lot of sense to the board. So, through those discussions at the, at the management board, Stormwater Management Board level, the board has, has recommended or really approved the use of the Stormwater Fund to use one of those options, which is to make direct payments to the commission in place of that special assessment, okay? With that direct payment, there's a ten percent discount that the county then receives. So, there is a cost savings sort of overall, okay? The direct payment, which would be concurrent with the spring and fall draws, as a result of those two draws, would be a total of a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, thirty-three dollar, a hundred ninety-two thirty thousand, thirty-three dollars and ninety cents per year, okay? That is about five percent of the overall stormwater fee that we collect on an annual basis on a Kentucky River Basin specific level, which is about fifty-five percent of the county geographically. It's about seventeen percent of the fees that we collect from in the Kentucky River Basin. But, five percent of the overall revenue, it does mean, it does mean we'll have less monies available on an annual basis for the routine upkeep, maintenance, and improvement of our own tributaries to the Kentucky River. But, we saw this as the best path forward for Porter County. What, what the state legislation also requires is a resolution to be passed by this body, the fiscal body, basically stating that we're going to use of the Stormwater Fund to make these direct payments and that's how we're going to satisfy the requirements of state code. Up on your screen is sort of the GIS analysis that we did, all parcels in the Kentucky River Basin. Green is agriculture, red would be residential. So, just a little geographic representation there for you.
How did they arrive at the number?
Uh, well, that was, all happened down at the State House.
Did they play whack-a-mole? I mean-
Could have been. Your guess is as good as mine is how they-
What was their matrix?
How they drew those numbers, say that again?
What was their basis? Acreage or use?
You're asking a-
Almost looks like population.
Does the basis for, the state statute basically said you're going to impose an assessment or the county's going to pay through this direct payment?
But, how did they arrive at that number?
Right, and what I, what I was going to say was that they basically picked the numbers, seven, I think it's, is it a seven dollars per?
Yeah, the break, the breakdown, Harold, thank you for getting into that a little bit. The breakdown is seven dollars per residential parcel, one dollar multiplied by the number of acres of, for agricultural parcels, two dollars multiplied by the acreage of the parcel for commercial parcels, fifty dollars if they're less than one acre, and then industrial or public utilities, regardless of parcel's size, pay three hundred and sixty dollars. Of course, I can't, I can't answer for you, the question for the authors of the bill, but, you know, it might have been whack-a-mole.
At least it's a formula.
Yes.
And others applied equally across all eight counties.
Correct. And just to give you guys, because I think Joy did ask me this question, I'm not sure if she shared these numbers with you.
Yes.
Projected revenue overall in the basin is just under two point six million dollars. And we're not the highest and we're not the lowest. Flexi on the low of the, well, right? Yeah, we're kind of right, I mean, we're kind of right in the middle. Yeah. Yep.
You need a motion?
Well, you guys have a resolution, I suppose it would be resolution number twenty-one oh one, Harold?
Yes.
And it's a resolution by the Porter County Council authorizing direct support payment to the Kentucky River Basin and Yellow River Basin Development Commission. You guys want me to read it or we can pass it names?
By title?
Yeah, I think the bytes is, yeah, reference it, everyone's got a copy of it.
Yes.
Everybody's got a copy in front of you?
Yeah.
I mean, entertain a motion to pass it.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion and second to pass resolution twenty-one oh one, again, a resolution by the Porter County Council authorizing direct payment to the Kentucky River Basin and Yellow Basin Development Commission. Any further discussion on the resolution, according to the direct payment? Who do you roll call, Madam Auditor?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want to sign it?
Yes.
Yeah. How many copies?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's find out. You want a co, how many copies you want?
Just, yeah, just one copy. Oh, no, you're getting seven now. Seven.
However, I didn't want to give them. I'm going to sign it. Mike, give me yours.
All right, thank you, anybody, anything else?
I've got nothing yet.
Thank you for hanging out for two hours with us.
No problem, thank you.
It was very entertaining.
I don't have anyone, no.
Thank you guys.
We got nothing.
Hey, just so you know, if you wanted it.
Whack-a-mole, stop.
All right.
I got one.
Harold, did you have anything else?
I do not.
Need a motion?
Yeah, is there anything, any other matter probably coming for the council?
You read the, you read the script on this, by the district team?
Yeah, I'd like to be involved.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to be involved.
Because we may, we may get mad at me, I'm a man.
I'll get with the prison and we'll probably get with Baker Tully and we'll try to set a path here to begin. Entertainer motion to adjourn? Motion and second to adjourn?
You sign it?
All in favor, signify or say an aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.